I will call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
Please join me in a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. If you would, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as received or proposed.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no, we have an agenda. Public comments. Is there anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom or on the telephone that would like to provide public comment? Item number three is years of service awards. Mr. Veder.
We have two years of service awards today. For 15 years of service, Garth Goodrich from the Recorder's Office.
I think it's 20.
I was gonna say.
It's, okay.
It should be 20.
Well, we'll make a new one for you then.
Five years, one way or the other. Five years.
Well, sorry about that. It's got the right date on it, but it's got the wrong number of years on it. So, we'll get that corrected and get you a good one. And I hope this one's right. Peggy Schmitz from the Attorney's Office, 25 years.
Is she here?
Garth, Peggy, wherever you are, hopefully she's someplace having fun.
Yep, thanks very much.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Claims and payments. Mr. Perry.
This week's expenditures total $551,024.15. Uh, we have our finer, final solar payments, uh, in the amount of $100,083. Secondary roads, $104,297. Elections, $117,000, uh, zero and, uh, $20. Health Department, $24,708. And finally Sheriff's Department, $55,835. Everything looks normal.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, or a resolution, a motion for the resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Item number five, project updates from department heads, elected officials. Kathy? Morning Kathy.
Good morning Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Uh, construction projects and our maintenance projects are going well. Uh, the bus tour, I think, went well. I wanted to follow up with an item since not all of you are on the bus tour in that, uh, regards to Bennington Road, the East Bennington Road Bridge. Uh, if you recall, that is our bridge that, our old truss structure that has been closed now for three or four years. Uh, we were waiting for a public hearing to go back to the public one more time and talk about what to do with the structure. I, I'm going to recommend to you that we tear it down, that we remove it. Um, I would like to get your opinion on how you want me to proceed, if we should look for a venue to have another public meeting or, um, how you would like us to proceed with that.
Was there a lot of, I mean, comment, public comment or anything when you talked to them before, or?
So, it's been four or five years since we had a meeting. And of course, the, the residents on the east side in particular, the few residents that live out there, they would like us to rebuild the bridge, keep the bridge there for recreational purposes, all a variety of, of alternatives here.
I think it was maybe about three years since we had the meeting. It was well attended. And I think the, um, that we did leave the public, leaving that there would be another meeting before a decision was made. So I don't, I do want to make sure we do that.
I think after that period of time, maybe we should, it'd be a good idea, I think, to probably reconvene. That would be my thoughts.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, we'll look for, uh, um, we had the last meeting at Dunkerton, either the library or the City Hall. We'll look for, uh, that same type of location, uh, perhaps early in September would be a good time to hold the meeting. And then one other topic that, um, I, I would like to revisit that we, I've been occasionally getting emails on and it hasn't been a high priority for us, has been, uh, the use of ATVs or AT, UTVs or ATVs in the county. And this would be what goes above and beyond, uh, what's in the code of Iowa, the state law. And May, um, Mike Tryonin recommended to us that we, I get your appetite for changing or, changing or enhancing county ordinance, if that, if that's something you're interested in. If it's not, then perhaps I shouldn't, um, waste any of our time working on something like that.
I'm interested. Board?
I'm interested, but I certainly, after seeing several of them on the road, that I didn't appreciate the way they were driving and, and handling the vehicles. And they weren't, I mean, I know there's changes to consider, but, um, I'm not sure. I, I know earlier we supported that, your position on it because of the safety issue. But, um, if, do you think there are other arguments to be made to us? I guess some information that would be shared with us that would maybe change our thoughts on it or change some of our thoughts.
I can present, um, approximately half the counties now have ordinances that do allow some type of ATV, UTV traffic on various county roads. Uh, I know the sheriff has opinions on it. Uh, Mr. Tryonin probably has guidance for us. Uh, we could have a work session perhaps. I'm just looking for some direction on how to proceed.
How much time do you think, I mean, you're looking at, then work and time that will require of you and your department, I suppose, before you could present that to us? Is that, oh, something that works into the schedule now or not?
I believe so. I, I think it would involve many departments here in the county. We'd have, have to meet and discuss it and.
So are the departments, as far as you're aware of, that would, it would involve supporting the position, maybe that we should at least reconsider or take a look at it?
One or two, Seth.
Well, really and truly, um, my position isn't whether, whether this should be reconsidered or not. That's a, that's a matter of opinion and there are a number of factors that can play into that. Uh, my role here would be to, to help prepare an ordinance. We'd of course look at, uh, what other jurisdictions are doing in trying to, to come to that. But, uh, I am not aware of what statistics, uh, we have, uh, that would play into whether, or, or other considerations that we'd have that would play into the decision. So I can't an, Kathy, I can't answer the question as to what's gonna, what factors are playing into whether or not we're going to do it. Um, I would think however, that because this is a, this is a situation involving an ordinance, it's really a matter of, of one being prepared, uh, the publication and, and other notice requirements being met, and then it going before the board.
Well, and I just meant to be more thorough, so that it, is it something that was gonna take us a little, you know, considerable amount of time? Not something we'd rush into, obviously, but how much time we'd spent and how much time you'd have to spend preparing some of this, since we haven't done it before?
Well, there has to be, so many other counties are allowing them. There has to be a boilerplate ordinance that could be presented to this board. It's interesting how COVID impacted this industry. It's really catching on. Uh, even, I see the city of Tama is allowing UTVs in their city now. Of course, they're a small city. I don't envision these in Waterloo or Cedar Falls running around, but I envision them in our, in our rural areas. And I just, what I like about it, and I, I have property in Wisconsin and I have one of these machines and I run all over the place with that thing. And I just see what it does for the economies in the rural areas of some of these counties. And I'd like to see a spring that, to Blackhawk County. I envision a family coming up from Des Moines or Kansas City or whatever and staying at Hickory Hills. And they decide to take their UTV up to the casino or the amusement park or whatever, or run out to Dunkerton, uh, and purchase gas in Dunkerton. Maybe it's an opportunity for Dewar to, uh, put a gas pump in with a pay at the pump. Uh, so I just look at it, what it could do for the economy of our rural parts of the county. So I'd like to see a ordinance that other counties are utilizing that appears to be effective. And, uh, we consider it and decide what changes we want to make to it and, uh, or, or pass it or not pass it.
Is it something you could bring back, some of those highlighted points or whatever to us, I guess, the group and see if we want to continue on? Or if we have more questions, that type of thing, I guess, or do you?
Absolutely. I can, uh, get a meeting here with some of the other departments and we can, um, begin discussions and then, uh, bring that information back to you.
Cause I know gauging the economy is gonna be kinda tough for us probably to even look at and know how, what the benefit of that is. But if other counties have some information on that, it'd be great.
Tom?
Yeah Kathy, do you currently, over the years, obviously you spend a lot of time in your staff in the rural areas. Uh, don't you currently see, um, those on the gravel roads right now?
Tom, this is Sheriff Thompson. I, we see them all the time. However, there is a provision in the Iowa code regarding implements of husbandry, which, uh, simply means, uh, when they're being used for farm use. And so, we try not to, uh, offend our farmers. We try not to intervene when they're out checking cattle or going out and checking their crops. And, and it is a convenient way for them to get from one field to another. And so, it's very difficult to enforce when somebody's running down the gravel road. Um, who, who are we to say that they weren't out checking their crops? Or they weren't running fence posts from one place to another, or, you know, so implements of husbandry are, i- it's kind of this very broad, uh, kind of, uh, statute. Now, when it's, you know, 14-year-old kids jumping ditches, that's something completely different. Uh, but, uh, so yes, we do see them and we're, we're seeing their frequency increase considerably. But, uh, a- again, this is a trend that Kathy's trying to be responsive to. Uh, I'm, I'm much like Dan. Uh, I, I, I don't necessarily disparage the, the approach moving forward. There's certainly a safety consideration. And so I think we need to be prudent about how we approve or how we approach where they can or can't go. Certainly, we don't want them on four-lane divided highways. But, uh, a- as long as there's some clear delineation on what they can and cannot do, I think for a majority of the ATV, UTV riders, um, you know, as long as it's enforceable, I think it can be done responsibly. Uh, where, where it's not done responsibly is where we start seeing the problems like they have over in Dubuque, where the young kids roll over and, and get hurt. So, uh, we, we've gotta be cautious about how it's written and, and they're.
I agree with you on that. So actually, what are we talking about? They're currently using them now for the rural areas to go from point A to B. By changing the ordinance, where, where are we, where are they asking to go to then? I mean, some of the towns don't, some of the towns don't allow it, so they can't drive to town. So what more can they do that they're not doing right now, I guess, would be the answer or question.
I'm not sure of any of the.
May, may I interrupt just real?
Can't, or that don't allow it right now.
I, I'm a little concerned that we're, we're getting into debate of something that's not on the agenda here. And, and this is getting pretty substantive. I, I think Kathy just, just wanted to do a quick temperature take. And clearly this is something where I, I think, you know, there's gotta be a meeting. We gotta list some pros and cons. We gotta get it back on agenda, on the agenda specifically for a, uh, for future meeting. And so if, if I am not offending anyone here, I think we should probably, uh, hang it up a little bit.
No, I guess the decision then to proceed, does that sound good for you? We can do that one?
Okay, and then we'll put on the agenda.
Thanks.
Thank you.
While I'm up here, I, I wanted to give you just a very quick, uh, quick update. Uh, as you know, last week was RagBri. And Kathy's department, my department worked very, very closely on, uh, working together on making sure that that, uh, transpired safely. Uh, manning, I don't know how many intersections over the two-day period, but, uh, it was substantial. Uh, the three counties prior to our county reported about 30 to 35 medical and crash incidents. We had three. So, uh, the three were a combination. I think we had two heat casualties and one asthma, uh, asthma attack. So, and then, uh, while in Waterloo, we had one, it was originally a, a, a report of a stolen bicycle, but it actually ended up being kind of a heavy night for the gentleman. I think he misplaced his bicycle. And it was found about 15 minutes later and, so he was on his way happy to have recovered his bicycle. So all in all, uh, RagBri was a very positive, uh, experience, both for law enforcement as well as, I hope, for the riders. Uh, and that was due in large part to the diligence of our, of our staff. So, uh, we were very, very pleased with the outcome.
Good.
Thank you.
I know I saw complaints on Facebook and social media about some of the bicyclists in town, but I just envision what this does for economy.
Mm-hmm, it's huge.
Uh, so it was a great event. It was good. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning Board.
Morning.
I'm talking about, uh, RagBri. Um, the Health Department, um, especially the Environmental Health Team, um, was busy in supporting that. And we will, we'll be doing the same for Irish Fest coming up this week. So if you see staff from the Environmental Health Team, they've just been running around town just, um, supporting in the many activities and with the, especially with the food vendors, making sure everybody has their license and the safety protocol and all that stuff. So, um, just a quick update, um, I'll do COVID in the COVID updated section. Uh, we got word back from Public Health Accreditation. Um, we had submitted our, um, documentation back in November. Um, so just to, um, give a, I don't know, like a clear picture of what that looks like. Um, it's about 100 measures. And so within those measures, there's quite a bit documentation that, um, the Health Department has to, um, submit. Um, and it's really to ensure that we're meeting national standards. And so of all, of the 100, um, measures that we submitted, um, only 23 were asked, um, questions. And so we have until the end of, um, August, August 30th, um, to submit, um, for, and, and respond to those questions. So that's great news. That's heading us in the right direction for Public Health Accreditation. So, very excited, but a lot of work, um, ahead of us. Um, so with that, um, there's been questions, um, in terms of, um, the flu season coming up. Um, I know that in the past, the supervisors had discussed whether to provide flu vaccines, um, for the county, um, employees. Um, but we're at a point now we have to order for vaccines. Um, it is something that, um, we do annually for the Health Department. Um, but we, we do have the means to be able to do that for the whole county. Um, usually, um, when county staff, um, go outside of the, um, county, um, I do believe an administrative fee is charged, but we don't charge that administrative fee. We only purchase the vaccines and then we give it out to the county. So, I need to know, um, from you all whether or not we will be vaccinating, um, just county employees outside of the Health Department. Um, and it's kind of time sensitive, but you can also give me a response, um, maybe via email or something.
Tom, did I see a light up?
No, don't, I was just gonna say, Nefisa, do you know where, did we do it last year?
So last year we didn't do, we did, that was the only year we didn't do. Um, you know, to be honest, I'm just a bit more concerned with where we are with COVID and the flu season coming. Um, I just want employees to be able to know that they can also get vaccinated from us. But it's, it's you all's decisions.
I guess I'd like to see us resume it this year, just to make it easier, cause I think it's gonna be more important because of the pandemic.
And the cost is covered by our insurance, correct?
Yeah, since we're self-insured, we, we just pay for the vaccine. So, um, like I said, they wouldn't be, but I wanna, um, make sure that I'm also, um, I have that information with Billy. But I do know that we, um, typically if they go outside, an administrative fee, cause that's what we do with, um, patients that come outside too, um, we bill the insurance. But this, we would not be billing the insurance. So for example, employees that are not insured would be able to get vaccinated.
Well, I would think that if we offer it, we'd have a higher percentage of employees get the shot. So I'm for it. Uh, when can we start getting our flu shots?
We're gonna order the vaccines and make it happen, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rory?
Good morning Board. Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. Uh, just wanted to share with you that, uh, for the last few weeks, we've been working on our new facilities management system. And, uh, we are to the point, uh, where we would like to kick that out to all the departments. Um, we'll be sending that to the departments, um, along with a tutorial video, uh, to show how to, um, uh, put in a work request to come to our department. Uh, for the last couple of weeks, we've been, uh, we've been building the system and we've been using it, uh, in our own department. And, uh, so far, uh, we're really liking what we see. I was hoping to have a little show and tell, but, um, just to kinda give you an idea of what, uh, what to expect, um, there'll be a link, uh, that you'll be able to go to. So this is a mobile system. Uh, there'll be a link that you can go to, open up a, uh, work request. And then there'll be, uh, dropdowns, uh, that you can, uh, check, uh, where your area is at. Um, you could put a small description in there and then that comes to Dana and myself. Um, I also wanted to point out, within that work request, there is priority levels as well. Um, we just asked that you look at those priority levels. Um, there is some examples under each one, uh, where, where the work order may fall into place. Um, so that's important. Um, so yeah, we're, we're excited. Uh, our, our department's been using it. It's been going very well. Um, we have, uh, our buildings, our facilities, uh, we're gonna utilize it for code enforcement. Um, we're gonna use it for energy tracking. So there's, there's many, many, uh, uh, different aspects of this system that's gonna help our organization, uh, be more, uh, organized with communication, accountability and productivity. So we're really looking forward to it. So we'll be getting that out to you folks soon.
Thanks Rory.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Yolando? I see that Yolando was recognized by Kelly Sullivan for all of his efforts and hard work in representing our veterans. So thanks, Yolando. We will move on to item number six, approval of the minutes from July 27th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. The minutes are approved. Consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? Mr. Veder?
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item 8A, contracts and agreements, a resolution that the memorandum of agreement between Blackhawk County, Dubuque County, Johnson County, Lynn County and Scott County, working as the Urban County Coalition with Blackhawk County's payment obligation in the amount of $25,000 be approved. The purpose and objectives of the Urban County Coalition are to jointly develop, communicate and advocate for issues of mutual interest to Iowa, to the Iowa General Assembly, the executive branch of the State of Iowa and other appropriate agencies, departments and organizations, and to collaborate on strategic planning to jointly develop regional solutions to issues of mutual interest.
So moved.
Second. And I, I know Mike has reviewed the, the agreement. Yeah? The MOU and said there was no issues or concerns.
I know. My understanding is the agreement's identical to last year's. There weren't any provisions, uh, stuck out to me outside of the cost provision, which, uh, I believe it assigns an, an even share to each, uh, member county. And so that's $25,000 apiece.
That's correct. And I see they're online.
Mm-hmm, yes. Uh, they are on Zoom. Would you like to provide a comment?
Yes, uh, thank you. This is Gary Grant. I'm one of your lobbyists for the Urban County Coalition. And, uh, I believe we also have, uh, Megan Malloy. I think Larry Murphy is traveling today, so he won't be joining us. Uh, I wanna thank you again for your consideration of, of continuing your membership as part of the Urban County Coalition. Um, I won't sort of go into length, uh, uh, in detail about what happened to, uh, this legislative session because, as you know, we'll be returning in, I think, a couple of weeks to, uh, provide you kind of with a, a, a more substantive update. But, uh, this legislative session was interesting to say the least. Uh, there were several things that sort of came to a head, kind of right at the, uh, the end of, of the legislative session. Uh, as you all know, regarding the backfill and mental health, we'll discuss those at length. And for those of you that may not be familiar with, uh, the formation of the Urban County Coalition, I just kinda wanna talk a little bit about, um, why it was formed and kind of what sort of we do on, on your behalf. Uh, the Urban County Coalition represents the five largest counties in, uh, eastern Iowa. And they represent, uh, uh, kind of a significant population center that I think a lot of folks felt wasn't, uh, represented or was underrepresented at the state Capitol. Because as you know, as an urban county, um, you folks run into some unique difficulties that aren't shared by some of your smaller neighbors. And it was felt that some of that, those perspectives needed to be conveyed to the state legislature. So, I'm happy to talk about any questions. Um, we provide, uh, uh, weekly updates during the legislative session. We're currently, um, I think, trying to schedule in September a session where, uh, I think it was decided in our last meeting last week that we're gonna meet by Zoom this year, uh, instead of in person to kind of talk about what issues we may have going forward with this legislative session. I think, just as a preview, some of my suspicions after, uh, talking to some, uh, to members of the Urban County Coalition, looks like we may be, uh, continuing to sort of pursue, uh, some items regarding unfunded mandates and local control. And there are some things in the, uh, recently passed mental health legislation that we think need to be sort of tweaked just a little bit. So, that's kind of a preview of where we might be going. I'm happy to sort of answer any questions that anybody has. And Megan, do you have anything you wanna add?
Um, you know, like you said, we will have a more substantive update on everything that happened over session. Um, you know, as Gary was saying, it was interesting just in terms of COVID protocols, but, um, we all got through it and we all tried to work together as best we could. Um, right now, we're just waiting for more information to come from redistricting and what that will mean for a special session, uh, perhaps in the next, I don't know, what do you think Gary? Eight to 10 meets or so?
Um, I think the latest that I heard just yesterday was, um, the process may be delayed a, a little farther than, than, or a little, a little farther than some people suspected. Uh, I'm now hearing it may be October before the legislature reconvenes to, to, uh, consider redistricting.
Sure. Um, but I, you know, other than that, just a more substantive update that we'll have soon on the specific bills and their outcomes. If there are any questions, they'll be for that. Just feel free to email me or call me. Happy to talk about any of it.
Okay, thank you Megan. Do we have any questions for Gary or Megan? All right. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item number 9A is a resolution that Blackhawk County collected a total of $5,020.80 from Jackson Schmidt, 96% of $5,230 that Blackhawk County paid for Iowa Law Enforcement Academy training per the employment agreement between Blackhawk County and Jackson Schmidt. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments or questions? Sheriff, would you like to make a comment?
I would. Um, both item, I, uh, 9A and 9B are, uh, two deputies that were just recently sworn and certified at the peace, uh, at the Law Enforcement Academy and are leaving. And, uh, these last two that are leaving now constitute about a 20% uh, drop in our total staffing at the jail. So currently, we are covering a 20% loss in staffing. That means we are forcing staff almost every day, almost every shift.
Is that why there's, uh, the sheriff deputy cars over here, uh, you know, that, some of your workers parking in the lot, the back two roads, you know, earlier in the day?
That's why every time that you call over to have them cited for parking at 11 o'clock in the afternoon because they're getting pulled in early, um, it's because they're being forced in.
Right, okay.
Um, there's no place else for them to park. We are forcing almost every day. We're currently working with Amanda and looking at some pretty dramatic options, and building some recommendations for the board, which probably by the end of the week I will have to you, but understand that this isn't isolated to just Blackhawk County. But I wanted to highlight these two, because I think this is substantial. Both of these officers are going to Bell Plain, Iowa, the little community of Bell Plain, Iowa, and when we asked, why are you going to Bell Plain, you're certainly not intending to retire from Bell Plain, Iowa. One of these, Andrew Toronas, is the son of a sergeant of mine. And when we interviewed him, this was his dream job, he wanted to be a Blackhawk County deputy because his dad is a Blackhawk County deputy, and he said they're paying me $5 an hour more, and they offered him a $5,000 signing bonus. So this settlement of $5,700, $5,000 to pay off his academy bill means nothing. So they're paying a $5,000 signing bonus plus $5 an hour more, starting to go to tiny little Bell Plain, Iowa. We offer them a county job to babysit inmates. That's a difficult thing to compete with, when they want to be driving 110 miles an hour with their hair on fire in Bell Plain, Iowa. It's hard to compete with. So be on the lookout for, for some recommendations as Amanda and I try and get relatively creative. Know that the Unit 5 contract is coming up, they're opening that up, November, December timeframe for negotiations, but this may be taking some dramatic action before that Unit 5 contract even opens up, because again, we can, we can address it at contract negotiation time, but that's still gonna give me six to nine months before that contract takes effect, and I need help now. So we're, we're, we try to suffer silently, but we're, we're getting to the point where we don't have any cards left to play. So it's a challenge, it's a challenge for every law enforcement agency across the nation, particularly in the state of Iowa, but we're feeling it dramatically right now. So we've got some plans, we've got some ideas, and we're gonna push that out to you, we've got some rough drafts that have been pushing around earlier this week, and so be looking for that. Thank you.
20% is a rather large number, and you say like this is just the two, is it similar situations for the other?
I, I've had them leave to go beat bridge inspectors, I've had them leave to go sell insurance, I, I mean, again, we're not, we're not just not competitive in law enforcement, we're not competitive in employment, and that makes it difficult.
That's across the whole industry, though, right?
It is.
Yeah.
It is, I mean, we're, we're behind, we know we're behind in the law enforcement industry as well, but, you know, when, when a sworn peace officer leaves to go sell insurance because he can make more money doing that, that's a difficult pill to swallow, too.
Same thing's happening at Deers, too.
Yeah.
All the, they get 80 employees and ends up with about six or seven still there before their time's up.
Yeah. It's tough right now.
I was just curious if it was for others' law enforcement positions, or?
Most of them are, most of them are. I mean, Waterloo was notorious for taking our best and brightest, and...
No, they're leaving.
I wouldn't say entice, but I would use the word pilfer.
You know, it's, and it's interesting times right now, because I remember, I mean, when Tony and I were young, we wanted to work the larger areas, the bigger cities. Now, the small towns are the desirable places to work.
Absolutely.
Because they don't face the challenges that the larger communities are facing. Because Waterloo lost many too.
Tony, were they going to the police department or sheriff of Bell Plain?
That's the Bell Plain Police Department, probably, yeah, an agency of 10 to 15 officers.
Well, you indicated the wages were a little bit higher, did you see what kind of a benefit package they were giving?
I have no idea.
Towards insurance?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Usually sometimes that makes a difference, too.
Yeah. Again, these are millennials, so they're young impulsives, too, so they, they may not be looking quite that deep either, but at $5 an hour more, you know, $29, $30 an hour, starting, the, the incentives maybe matter a little bit less, too, so.
A $5,000 bonus, yeah.
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 I think Dan said the key word, too, they're kind of flocking to the smaller communities right now.
Hey, Tom, this is Amanda, HR Director, so with the benefits, I think because younger generations are allowed to stay on their parents' insurance for quite a bit longer, right? Up to 26 or even older, even if you're married or still going to school. So our attractive benefit package from an insurance standpoint may not be a huge selling point for us. One other thing we are seeing is with the workforce coming in, is they definitely value that work-life balance, so the time off, the amount of time off, one thing in the union right now, you can't use any vacation in your first year, that's a bit of a shock to people when they first come here, and that's not just Unit 5, that's actually several of our unions, so those are the kind of things we're trying to take a look at and possibly just look at recommendations and things to go into negotiations and negotiations, as well as just other factors we can change right now outside of negotiations, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jalka?
Yes.
Item 9B is a resolution that Blackhawk County collected a total of $5,719 from Andrew Toronas, 86% of $6,650 that Blackhawk County paid for Iowa Law, Law Enforcement Academy training per the employment agreement between Blackhawk County and Andrew Toronas. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Jalka?
Yes.
Item 9C is motion to accept the notice of retirement from Kim Veder as Information Technologies Director effective December 31st, 2021. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Kim, thank you. Thanks for your service to the county.
Yeah, I did have a little something I wanted to say. I've worked for 42 years in the IT department on September 6th. During this time, I've held several positions, all of them in the IT committee, or department, sorry. I earned a degree in computer science at the University of Northern Iowa while working full-time here, and I appreciated the support of the county during those years, and have done my best for the employees and residents of Blackhawk County. I'm grateful for the friendship and support of my fellow employees during these many years, and I look forward to the next chapter in my life, thank you.
Thank you, Kim, I want to thank you for your decades of dedicated, hard-working service, and also for your, for your friendship, and your, just all your help and support that you've given me in my years here, but just all the ways you go above and beyond all the time constantly for Blackhawk County, it's, it's truly appreciated.
Linda?
Yes, Kim, I said, I know a lot of thought went into your decision, and after 42 years of service to Blackhawk County, I know it wasn't an easy decision for you. IT, as we all know, is a critical function of every department, each and every department we have, and I, since 2013, when I became supervisor, I know the IT department today is in the best position it's been in years, from the staffing standpoint, from transitioning out of ACES, or even though we'll use a third-party vendor, but for some things, transitioning to have that in-house staffing again, but the equipment and, and things that we've been able now to purchase and start putting in place, and I know that's part of the decision of why you chose the December 31st date, was to put the county in even better position and to help get projects done that you were planning on getting done and hoped to have done for that, so as I said to you last week, because of the position the county's in right now, you should be very proud of that. I think that's a, quite an accomplishment from where I've seen us come. So thank you very much for your service to the county, but I know we've got plenty of time to thank you over and over again, but thank you especially for that dedication.
And it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. Item 9D, Discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19.
Dr. Ibanez, Blackhawk County, Public Health Director, have a lot of information, so I'm gonna just try to provide a synopsis and then follow up in writing with you all. So the first, as you all are aware, the Delta variant is a variant that is most predominantly here in the United States and also in, in Iowa. Our risk level is currently at about 11.1% for the average 14-day percent positivity. If you'll see on our website, on our social media, we've changed our risk level to high. Over the past weekend, we had about 88 cases, so that's, that's pretty high. In terms of our vaccination, we're making little minute process, progress, and so I'll just give you a comparison between last week and this week, so that you, you all are aware. So the previous two weeks, we're at 59.6% of vaccination between residents age 12 and over, and this week, we're at 60%, so very, very small progress. For the 18 and above, previous two weeks, we were at 61.3%, and now we're at 61.8%. And so we're, we're trying everything that we possibly can to encourage people to get vaccinated, and one of the initiatives was our lottery, and so, and that ended on July 2029. So we had about 3,628 individuals that initiated their vaccine series, so had the first dose of vaccine series between June 11th and July 29, 2021. There have been 20 winners, and 15 have already claimed their price, and Blackhawk County Public Health is working to notify the most recent winners of, of their price. On August 10th, we'll have a youth event between 3:00 to 7:00 at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex, and this is to increase vaccination before school starts, and anyone who gets vaccinated will get a day pass to the sportsplex, so we, we appreciate their collaboration and business partnership, so that's great. So with that, also, Test Iowa is also offering test kits, you can go online, it's through People's Community Clinic, and it's a saliva test, you get the results within 24 hours, and so we, we continue to send out that information. Now CDC, so on July 27th, CDC updated their masking guidance to the following, to reduce their risk of becoming infected with the Delta variant and potentially spreading it to others, CDC recommends that fully vaccinated people wear masks in public indoor settings if they are in an area of substantial or high transmission, and CDC has identified Blackhawk County at the high level of transmission. So one of the things with their guidance, though, is saying is that fully vaccinated people might choose to mask regardless of the level of transmission, particularly if they or someone in their household is immunocompromised or is at increased risk for severe disease. And so we've been just doing our best to provide the updated guidance and making sure that people are aware of where we are as a county, and we've had a meeting on Monday with the superintendents just to get their intake in preparation for schools reopening, and so we provided their guidance, we're working on a one-pager for them to be able to provide to parents where they can get vaccinated, and also we've asked the healthcare systems, Unity Point, People's Community Clinic, Mercy One, to work with them to make vaccination accessible to the parents and children prior to school and during also school. So we'll be, we'll be holding bi-weekly meetings just to, you know, have those conversations with them in preparation for schools, and also for them to be able to communicate with each other about what they're seeing in their different districts. Contacted Grove Cedar Valley, I do think it's time to update the business community, and so I'm working, I'll be working with Carrie Dara to get that in, in the books, and especially for businesses to be able to provide those talking points to their, to their employees, I think that's important. So other than that, this is where we are, my hope is that people continue to get vaccinated, especially as we head into the cold season. So I, I will, I will give you the one-pager.
How much testing are we going out and doing in the public for, like, the restaurants and stuff? That's a big concern of mine, every restaurant I go in now, there's no workers, no crooks or anybody wearing masks.
Yeah, that's, that's, we, we can enforce that, we can enforce it, so that's why we'll be having those conversations, just to encourage and just to, but we, we can't.
So what are they doing, if they can't enforce it, they're not working? Your employees?
But no, no, legally, we cannot enforce it because of the law. So I think that's where, have to talk to the state legislators. So I, I do want to say that we've had great turnout when we have the, the business community, when we provide those information, so we do what we can, but there's certain things outside of our control, so.
You gotta get to the workers, not the, the people running the show, you gotta get to the workers, they're the ones that are getting the shots. There's a lot of people, you said 3,000 people got, you know, during that whole period, that's what, less than 1% of the population of Blackhawk County?
Right.
Shame on all of us.
Any questions for me?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item number 9E, discussion possible board action in regard to security guard services at Pinecrest facility. Rory?
Morning, Mr. Givens. Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Rory Givens, Maintenance Superintendent. It's probably been about a month ago, we had this in front of the Board of Supervisors for discussion with regards to the guard, security guard services over at the Pinecrest facility. At that time, if you recall, we had talked about the DHS opening up their service window, which they did, and so what we have done over there with respect to the guard is reconfigured the staging area, I guess we'll call it. We eliminated many personal items that as, as we start seeing more, more people, more traffic in that facility, we took away that concern of somebody potentially grabbing a personal item. So that has been resolved, and I did send the Board out, it was kind of late last week, just a, a real brief update, but I will say that our existing guard that had been over there has resigned, so we do have a new guard in place, and we're still evaluating how, how the services are going with that particular individual. We still have the same barcodes on each level, just to identify that they are making their rounds through the building. There's not as much interaction between this guard and the, and the public as there was in the past, now again with that service window being open from DHS. So I guess, at this point, I bring to the Board, if we want to continue these services, if we feel that we're getting our money's worth, I was asked to put this on the agenda to have that discussion.
You're so diplomatic in your comments, Rory.
I think we ought to be talking about the whole thing, all, all of the guards, after the incidents last week in here, where we only had one guard on duty.
Yeah.
For several hours.
That was Friday, we had two guards on staff, one guard did get called out on an emergency, which left us with only one guard in place. Which I can say that doesn't happen very often, but it did happen, and I believe PRMAR does need to look at that particular situation and at least have a, a backup plan in place, and that's something that I can work with PRMAR on, that communication should have happened between that staff member and PRMAR.
Board, I was the one that put this on the agenda, because we said we'd readjust it. I think for the cost of the services, I think we're being told it's around $700 a week, approximately.
That's correct.
And I think the time has come to... And I think the time has come that I'm going to make a motion as soon as discussion is over to give Rory authorization, to give notice, I don't know if it's 30 or 60 days, Rory, whatever the agenda or contract files are.
It'd be 30-day written notice.
30-day written notice to eliminate that position out there. And just go back to concentrate down in the courthouse and make sure we got things straightened out down there. As Greg indicated, we had some concerns last week. So I think with the state opening up their window again down there, and it's way back for the last 40 or 50 years, that'll be my motion. So I will make that motion to give notice and eliminate that position out there.
I guess Rory, is that your recommendation?
I mean, you know the situation.
Yeah. You know, here's the thing, is I, I did reach out to, to, to the departments over there at Pinecrest, and we did ask the question, you know, what are you seeing? And the, and the, the common feedback was, is that, that the staff over there do feel that having a guard does provide a bit of a sense of security. They do wish that, you know, they would see more of a presence. And I, I take that to mean more walkthroughs through the building, maybe not being staged right at the entryway all the time, but actually being physically walking through the building throughout the day, which we try to, we try to manage that again by using that barcode to, to show that, you know, you, you have to scan this to show that you've been there. So just basically receiving information from the, from the staff over there, and this is from DHS as well, along with our county staff. You know, they, they do receive a bit of a sense of security. Though I wish that we could provide more, and I think we had this, this discussion earlier on when we were looking at this a year ago, you know, maybe a higher level type of security, being armed security, that's, that's where I think it would be nice to get to. But, you know, I, I think there's a lot that goes along with that, too, with regards to the new laws that are out there. So it just isn't prudent to do that.
And cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of sensitive business that happens in that building, both from, from all sorts of different departments. And I want to see us maintain what we have right now.
Yeah, and I will share with the board, too. It's probably been, it's probably been at least two years ago now, we did have a situation over there where one of our maintenance mechanics tried to intervene and actually was, was injured. But I will say also, on the other hand, given the amount of time that I've been around with the county, very, very few incidences over there, and that was one of them.
Would it make sense to have the Security Committee, I think, take a look at it? I mean, continue it at least for in the meantime, or temporarily, until you could take a look at that and see if there isn't something we could do better, I guess, from a security standpoint or a safety standpoint for staff or?
Yeah, and I, I, I think the, when we met a month ago and talked about this, I had indicated, you know, the county has made several improvements to that building with regards to security, with regards to key fob doors, locking the, the wing doors, prohibiting the public from getting into access to those offices. I look at that as a huge step forward in security for that building, along with the VA department, they have their own access now. So yeah, I, I don't disagree. I mean, we could always get back together with a Security Committee meeting and, and talk about what can we do differently, what can we do more. But I will say that the board has allowed us to do quite a bit for that building with regards to mechanisms in place.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Item 10A, Work Session in Regard to Consideration of All Aspects of the American Rescue Plan Funding. Mr. Perry?
Yes, so here we are. I want to do a few things today. First, I want to provide an update. Second, I want to give an opportunity for anybody to ask questions, whether that be on the board, on any information that I've sent out, or any department head that has, has any questions. And then the third thing that I want to do is I, I want to develop a plan moving forward and update everybody on, on what my recommendation would be as, as far as that goes. So with that being said, the, the update I'd like to provide is we have, I have met with every department outside of health, but we do have, we've had something scheduled for quite some time. So we are getting that, we're getting that handled, and I'm, I'm excited to, to meet with Nafisa and get those, get those ideas on paper. And, and I will say, the, the more that I meet with these department heads and the more that we kind of brainstorm and, and the more that we kind of go along and I have more conversations, it's, it's getting more and more exciting. We have, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity that we can really take advantage of with these dollars. And, and so if, if I express anything else, it's, it's going to be excitement that there's, there's a lot of things that we can accomplish. So the second update, really the, the continued struggle is, is getting costs and getting estimates. It is, it is still a problem. We are trying. It's, it's just, we can, we can throw a dollar amount out there, but it's almost, you know, throwing a dart at a dartboard. So I would, I would just encourage a little bit of patience on that front. And, and the realist, or the, the reality is that we won't know until we get actual true estimates. So we could be close, we could be far, but at the end of the day, we'll just kind of keep moving forward. And then the other update that I, I had is, you know, a lot of the questions that I'm getting, especially from the department heads are, what are other departments doing? What are some examples? And, and so that's, that's why I've, I've also invited the department heads here today, because I, I want them to have a sense of ownership in this, in this as well. I, I want us to have a little bit of collaboration as far as what we can do. I mean, these, these guys really put in a lot of time and effort to, to not make, to not only make their department better, to make the county better. And so I really just want to create a sense of collaboration as, as well. So with that being said, that's, that was the update that I had. We are, we, we have a, we have a ways to go as far as the funding, as far as dollar amounts. And, and so I'll open it up to any questions that anybody has, whether that be either department heads or, or the board. If there's any, any type of direction, any questions that you have, anything that you would like to see come out of these, these individual discussions before I move on.
Now, Mr. Perry, you had talked about setting, setting up a subcommittee to evaluate.
Yes, you know, and, and I was, I was going to touch that, or touch on that as well in, in my, in my third section on, on my plans moving forward. But it, it is extremely evident that we need a subcommittee to, to freely discuss these ideas, that we can bounce ideas back. And, and again, I'll have, I'll have a conversation with Rory, and then I'll have a conversation with Mike. And it's, it's, it's as if it would be a much better conversation if we're all in the same room to kind of bounce ideas back and forth. And it just, like I said, it's just, it's, it's extremely evident that, that we need a subcommittee to, to move forward. And with that being said, I would, I would encourage and invite a member of each department to, to partake in the subcommittee. So that's, that's what I would like to see moving forward and, and go from there. So, so if any of you have any questions, any guidance, any, I'm, I'm happy to answer anything.
I do think creation of a committee is, is key. And serving on the ISAC Working Group on, on the American Rescue Plan, that is how most counties are proceeding. They'll have, depending on what the quorum is on their board, one or two supervisors. We could have two in our case. And it's just because, I mean, we've got a great list of things right now, but, but they're all kind of partially baked. And the way that we get to a more complete product that we can more thoroughly debate and, and dive into here as a board, is to have that all flushed out in, in a committee. Because this is a really exciting opportunity, and we've got a lot of great minds here in the county. If we put them all together, we're going to come up with a really great plan, I think.
I'm interested in the subcommittee. It sounds like you are, too, Chris.
Yep. So am I. I talked with James yesterday. We, we even walked the area a few blocks out to just check, check for things, for like extra parking, where we might find extra parking, what the possibilities of a parking area would be, and what, what other ideas we had of getting everybody out of the basement and into a different area, moving stuff out of the basement over at the Sheriff's Department, because there was always that fear of water. And they've got a lot of stuff over there that needs to be protected. So we checked out some buildings and got some ideas there, too.
You've got more than two interested. Is there a way to have alternating supervisors on it?
Absolutely. And, and, I mean, we, we can get extremely flexible with that. I mean, we can, I mean, each, each session, we can have a different group of supervisors, anybody that's available. And, and it's, like I said, this, this is supposed to be a really fun, exciting time that, that we can, we can get involved. So, so the, the more involved, the, the better. And, and I think that's going to help with collaboration, that's going to help with, with a lot of things, so.
Well, I think this is quite an opportunity, and I think it's ironic how, I mean, the county is situated nicely financially to begin with. But we're being provided funding that we can realize some things that were only dreams before. Other communities are, this is a life vest for them. And as I've said during the budget talks many times, supervisors, you know, those that long-term have been on this board and those previous to some of us, prepared the county well to a point of where we are right now. And I think we can take advantage of opportunities to provide more value for a dollar and take care of some issues that will help keep taxes at bay as we move down the road for decades.
Well, I think you bring up a great point, too, because although these funds aren't supposed to directly affect the, the levy rates, and, and we're not supposed to decrease that, but realistically, if you look at these opportunities, as, as long as we, you know, spend these dollars strategically, I mean, that's, that is what that's going to do. That is going to keep that, that levy rate down, because we won't have these large projects that we're going to be having to tax for or, or potentially bond for. So, you know, there needs, like, you know, and, and I'm glad we are going to be moving forward with that, with that subcommittee, because there is, there's a lot of things that we can, we can accomplish. And if we do this strategically, then over a, over a longer period of time, I, I know we have three years to, to allocate these spun, or these funds, and an additional five years to actually spend these funds. But what I don't want to do is, is really rush to any conclusion and, and spend our dollars and then just be done with it, and then look back five years from now and say, I, I wish we would have done this. So with that being said, I, I don't see this just being a committee for one year, two year. I, I see this as being a five-year committee that we can actually continuously meet and, and see what the needs are as, as the years progress, so.
We set up the first subcommittee meeting, and we'll see which two supervisors are available based upon that date and get the ball rolling.
Because our staff's always been great to collaborate with each other, and I think that's a definite plus to some of the committees we don't have, is having every input from everybody. But I like the rotating idea, only because you could have two supervisors on a committee, which we've seen often happen, and maybe when it comes back to the full board, something can be voted down by three other supervisors. So people can go to a lot of work and a lot of planning, and then bring something to the board that they're excited about and not go through. So I think that's at least an opportunity for us to have input.
I'd like to see us rotate even some of the employees into it, too, other than the department heads. You know, there's a lot, like was said by Chris, there's a lot of people out there with some good ideas that, you know, just because they're not the department head, they should be able to voice their opinion, too. I like some of the great ideas we already got on the table, and hopefully we get some more.
And hopefully some of those, if they can attend the meetings, because sometimes with staffing, that's an issue, but they can relay that to their department heads. And we have ideas from everybody. I think we had some from people outside the county that were even giving us suggestions and ideas.
Outside the county?
Outside our county staff.
Oh.
And us.
I don't think we'll take ideas from outside.
Well, we will, actually, because other counties were doing things that were kind of exciting, too, that was, you know, maybe thoughts that we hadn't thought about. So that was something we were asking people for, what are their ideas? And some of the things you mentioned on your committee, that you hear other counties doing that we maybe haven't thought about. So the more information, the better. This is something very unique, as Chris mentioned, for us to have an opportunity to do something like this without taxing.
And I agree with what James said, too, about not being in a hurry to get, you know, get things done, do them right.
Let's be aware of, of what the municipalities in our county, with their own form of government, are doing, so that we ensure they mesh and we don't have duplication.
Oh, and I'd actually work jointly with some. If there were a project that we'd like to.
I think we should be able to get a better sense soon of what, so, so Waterloo and Cedar Falls got their direct allocation, but the smaller communities had to wait for the state to apply for that funding, which has now, after much delay, has been done. So we should be able to get a sense of what Evansdale and El Coran and La Porte and Hudson and all those communities are getting, too. And so there, I think there's, this is a, a perfect time for, for collaboration amongst all the, all the municipalities in, in this community.
We could use some ATV trails out in Evansdale.
Talk to your city.
So, so I'll, I'll, I'll ask again, I mean, is, is there any questions either from the department heads altogether or, or the board on anything that I've, I've submitted thus far, or any direction that you would see, any questions that you have for not only me, but just kind of specific capital items? And if not, I will, I'll talk about it, the, the timeline, too, which actually I'll just touch on right now. But, you know, having, having these dollars and, and actually having a good idea on, on what, what the board supervisor is going to approve and allocate and, and actually fund, if we start talking about those ideally, kind of on a timeline that I have in mind and is early November, at, at.
To make decisions on?
Correct, yep.
Why would we do that so soon? You mean, just kind of prioritizing, or are you meaning actually voting on some of the projects?
Well, I mean, there's, there's going to be some, there's going to be some low-hanging fruit out there. And, and so that's, those, I don't, I don't want to hold meetings just to hold meetings and, and to prolong everything. I mean, if, if there are things that, that need to get done, we all agree that they need to get done, I would like to get those kind of approved and moving. I don't, I don't want to just kind of hold meetings, and if we essentially all, all agree on, on one item, I don't want to prolong that item.
I don't think you have to have a meeting to have a meeting. I think you do it as needed, or as there's things that you want to accomplish or somebody's ready for. It's not like let's just meet every Thursday or once a month or whatever. You'd really take a look at what works for the group?
Yeah, I, yes, I would, I would agree to that. I would also think that there would be a hybrid. I, I do want to just, I, I do want to keep this, this momentum going. And so with, with that being said, that's kind of what I was thinking, if we have, if we have some, some capital items that we do want to accomplish sooner than later, if we do kind of start talking about that before the budget amendment, then we can include that.
I would, I would agree with that with getting committee meetings going right away. Because I would say some of the, because there is some economic stimulus benefit to be able to move forward sooner than later with some of these projects, in order to just help out the, the local economy. Anytime that we're investing in capital, especially when we can spend those dollars locally, that's helping out our, our community here. And then the other aspect of that we don't want to forget, especially as the Delta variant is, is going, is that there are a number of mitigation, pandemic mitigation aspects of this, including like the, you know, things like air scrubbers and stuff. So we want to flesh out those stuff, those things sooner than later, so that we can have the safety benefit of those, as well as, I'm really curious of all the stuff that's going to come from the Public Health Department. And so there might be, those are what I think of the areas that we might want to move sooner than later. Those are some of the areas I'm thinking about.
Anything else, James?
What am I thinking, first meetings soon?
Right away. We have, this week, the, the orders are here for the, their preliminary visit. And so I would say, starting next week, as soon as next week. So I, I want to, I want to get on this and, and, you know, start, start conversations very soon, so.
Schedule it.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments or questions in regard to item 10A? Item 11. We have three applications submitted for the Health Board. Item 11, we have three applications submitted for the Health Board. So, I think we need to schedule interviews. Who would like to be involved in that?
I'd like to be involved.
Me, too. You and I, Chris?
Yep.
All right, we'll start scheduling those.
Sounds good.
So, we can get that open position filled.
I don't think those have been received by the supervisors, have they?
Yeah, they were emailed to us. That's how I was, yeah, they popped in through our system.
Last week?
Yeah.
Maybe we can just double-check that they get sent out.
Yeah, make sure all supervisors receive them.
It would have been sent by Civic Plus.
Yeah, that's typically what we get.
All right, so I'll work with Kayla to schedule those with Chris and I.
Okay.
All right. Any other information from the Board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. Okay. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, aye? All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.